I'd like to call the meeting to order. Kenny, I don't know, do we, it's, I know some of them will be coming and going to scouts and that, but if we need some chairs, we get, maybe if they want some, I don't know how many people are in the hall yet, but we got a pretty good crowd. Roll call of aldermen.
Mr. Heisler.
Here.
Mr. Consula.
Here.
Mrs. Hull.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Ridgewitz.
Here.
Mr. Randall.
Here.
Mr. Anthony.
Here.
Mr. Davidson.
Here.
Mr. Sillsby. Mr. Hayden.
Here.
Mr. Seibert.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Mr. Galetti.
Here.
Mr. Musgrove.
Here.
Mr. Orlett.
Here.
Ms. Schneider.
Here.
Alderman Sillsby is excused. Roll call department heads.
Police Chief Bill Clay. Fire Chief Tom Poor. City Attorney Garrett Horner.
Here.
Ken Vaughn. Royce Carlisle. Jamie Maitreut. Tim Gregowitz. Jim Schneider. Leander Spearman. Emily Foltz. Chuck Schaefer. Bob Sabo. Debbie Belvo.
Emily Foltz is excused on vacation. Ladies and gentlemen, this evening, we have Boy Scout Group 554? 554 from the Church of Latter Day Saints here in Belleville, Belleville Ward, and they're going to come forward and present the colors. So at this time, if you would please stand and join me and take their, their lead on the Pledge of Allegiance. Color guard attention. Color guard advance. Color guard, post the colors. Scouts salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. Color guard dismissed. Thank you, boys. It's nice to see the scouts. They often visit us. And these gentlemen are working tonight, many of them on their merit badge for citizenship in a community. So we thank them for presenting the colors while they were here, listening for that merit badge and taking notes that they have to answer. Scouting's a great thing for the kids in our community, and thanks to the adult leaders. This time, we do have a public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
And, do we have a folder on it? On the public hearing, do we have the, I don't, we just have the notification. The public hearing tonight is on the vacation of an alley, right, Tim? And the actual description, I don't have it in front of me. It's the alley, is this the one that's? Do we have the exact address?
It's between lots 29 and 30, as help was described.
Okay. Okay, good. Garrett's got the, let me read this. At this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna open the public hearing. This is a special public hearing as, aside from the council meeting this evening. Purpose of this public hearing is a notice of the public hearing regarding an alley vacation at High Ridge Drive between Lot 29 and Lot 30 has been scheduled for today, May 5th, 2014, at 7:00 PM. This vacation is at the request of a homeowner, correct, Tim?
Yes.
Have, is there anyone here this evening that's here to speak against or has any concern dealing with this request of the city council to vacate this alley? Is there anyone here tonight to speak in favor? Yes, sir.
I'm the owner.
Would you want to come forward and just very briefly give your name, address, and, and your request, the purpose of your request?
My name is Mark Emmerich. I reside at 85 Santa Fe Mountain Road in Evergreen, Colorado, and I own the two lots where we're vacating the lot, the, the property in front of. And that's what we'd like to have happened here, Your Honor.
So this is a, an alley basically on paper?
Yes. Yes, there, there's nothing there. It, it's, yeah.
I remember, I remember the situation now. So this is, for the council's sake, it's basically separating on paper his two lots, and what we're asking is that, and there's no other property owners, it's both you on both sides of it, correct?
That's true. There is another property owner, Paul and Angela Childs, but they have signed a statement saying that they, they agree.
Okay, I did, I think Emily had showed that to me before she went on vacation, too. Okay, any, any questions in the council for the, the person who's requesting? Mr. Davidson?
Was there, there was an issue with like utilities, is that all settled?
That's all settled. All utilities have signed off on it.
Right, right, I did hear that also. It's all coming back to me now, it was a little bit. Okay, so, we have this public hearing for the purpose of hearing any concerns, and certainly we've now heard from the owner as to his request. If there's no other, this will come to a vote during the regular city council meeting, sir. If there's no other comments you wish to make or no one here wishes to express, I will so close pub, this public hearing. Anybody else? Public hearing is closed. Thank you, sir, and it'll be later in the program, meeting tonight, the agenda that will act on this. Okay, back to the regular agenda. Just note, in your, in your, in your, I guess it's on the packet out there, too. We're gonna read this all through, Garrett. Back in May, or back in, I shouldn't say in May, several months ago, we adopted an ordinance that spelled out some language of participation at public, at public participation to make sure that we remain civil, respectful, and that things flow in a manner that we're all proud of. You think we need to read the whole thing?
No, I think you just need to invite people.
So, it is, I believe, it's on the agendas. I'd ask all of you to, especially those of you who attend regularly, to please read this new, and we're gonna print this on the, on the program, on the, on the agendas. What's that?
Every time.
We're gonna print it for a while. Until such a time that we feel that, we feel comfortable, but for now, we're going to. But we want to tell you that we, in our agreement, that it would start, be effective May 1st. So, with that explanation, I also wanted this evening, make sure that before we get into the regular portion of the meeting here, I skipped over with all the stuffs going on in the full house here. I do want to point out the disaster planning. If there would be, heaven forbid, any reason to vacate this, this meeting room because of smoke or fire, we would all ask you to carefully and calmly leave the building, probably preferably at the front door, go across the street, and meet in front of the St. Clair County Courthouse sign. That way, we're away from the building as the emergency equipment arrives, but we can kinda make sure we don't have a count of this room who's all here, but we can kinda ask each other and try to make sure that we're getting everybody out of the building. If there would be a storm ever, and you're here, there's signs as you go out in the hallway. There's also police officers who will show you pointing to the storm, the storm shelter in the basement of this building, which is directly across from the city clerk's office, the stairs. So I make those two things to make sure everybody's aware. At this time this evening, we have a couple items under the presentations, recognitions, and appointments. I want to first of all, start out by recognizing, as we do each month, the first meeting of the month. I'm sorry?
We're missing public, it's a space face.
I'm gonna open it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right, you're right. We got going here with the new rules, and I forgot to open it. We talked about it, and I, I'm like you, I'm not used to, it's, it's actually in front of it, and I jumped over it. I flipped the page reading it, and I didn't. We will now back up just a section, second. For those who have had a chance or who want to address the public, the council this evening, please wait till you, I recognize you. Step up to the microphone when I recognize you. Give your name and address, and try to keep your comments to about three minutes. And as stated in here, try to have them connected with city business, for sure. Anybody this evening who would like to speak? Yes, sir, front row.
Michael Hackberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. Few items. First, on the roundabout flowers. The Parks Department has a million dollar budget. I'm sure that somewhere in their budget, they could come up with the $5,500 to pay for those flowers and get them planted, so we don't have to worry about whether the area is in TIF 3 or isn't, or if this is a TIF-eligible expense or not. Second is that there's talk now of moving forward with ADA-compliant city hall. And that's all well and good, but I'd like to get an update on where the city stands on making their sidewalks ADA-compliant, and the fact that, coming up on two years, you poured sidewalk that wasn't done and promises to get it corrected. And we just keep on waiting, and it's like always another excuse as to why it's not done. And third is, a month ago, I brought up the TIF 10 financing. Making a payment in October that was missed would have saved $20,000 in accrued interest, $824,000 payment that was never posted to the notes, and an entire missing page from the payment schedule. I have yet to hear any updates on that, or if there's even any concern about those items being missing and being addressed. Thank you.
Okay. And we, I think we told you that we met with the developer, and there's questions that we ask. At the last meeting, I thought we addressed that, but I, I'm, we're addressing it now, that we have met with the developer, and he, Mr. Horner does have questions for him that he's researching, and we'll get back with us, so we'll have an answer. Okay, anybody else this eve, yes, sir, in the back corner? You're next.
Stuart Lanard, South 29th Street, Belleville, Illinois. 318 South 29th Street. Few items here. I was up at CVS the other night, and some guy, it was look, little rambunctious up there. He said he just got out of jail, and he assaulted some 80-year-old woman. I thought, well, it could be long, probably, and you're gonna be going back. And a friend of mine, Bud Argus, somebody stopped him today and was giving him a hassle over his article in the News Democrat. And I was at the Moda Mart to get a cup of coffee before I come here, and some guy said, "Nugget's down here."
Uh, excuse me.
That's what he said.
Okay.
It was a black, black guy that said it.
Okay, okay. Stuart. Now, I just pointed out, and you have this on your agenda. I've asked you, and we, we adopted this because we, we demand civility and respect and decency, and I think you're crossing the line there. You could, you can better phrase your, your statement without being quite so bold.
Well, I was just quoting him, word for word.
Stuart?
Okay.
Let's get to the point of the rest of your message, because you're, you're really, this, this is what, exactly why we enacted this.
A lot of think three minutes of a little bit of citizens' comment should throw everybody into a tizzy, whether it's exactly pertaining to the board's business tonight or not. But okay, here we go for the last one. Lindenwood has been here over 10 years, and as far as I can tell, there's no hint of any new business in the area. They spend money like it's going out of style on planting sod instead of planting seed, grass seed. They plant sod, which is way over, way higher than just planting grass seed. And they don't try to, you know, they spend money like it's going out of style. Thank you.
Next gentleman.
My name's Michael Bidner. I live at 2015 West A Street here in Belleville. I have been attending the city council meetings over the last several years and have not participated in the public participation. However, I felt compelled to speak tonight, as the city begins its new fiscal year and because of what I've witnessed over the last several years. I direct my comments tonight to this body as a whole. I am not singling out any individuals. All of you must learn to work together. You need to learn the art of compromise. Your actions, more than any other governing body, directly affects the quality of life of the residents of this city. To vote against a measure, to be obstinate, contentious, or contrary just to do so, or to blindly follow along affiliated lines is not governing. I would have thought after the last election, when longtime incumbent office holders and aldermen lost their positions, it would have been a wake-up call for all of you. The newly, the newly elected, the re-elected, and those of you who are running in the next election. I'm glad this forum will now be televised. My hope is the residents of the city will watch and become interested in these proceedings. Remember, ladies and gentlemen, what you do here now will be out there for all to see, and there is always another election. As a lifelong resident of this city, I ask all of you to stand as individuals, make, make decisions which will help the city, move the city forward, and correct problems. Now more than ever, the city needs leaders. Don't just follow, lead. All of you need to ask yourself the question, do I want to be known as being on the council or within the administration when Belleville began its decline or began, or began to prosper? Finally, there are many positive things happening within the city, but there are serious issues that need to be addressed. You cannot, you cannot ignore them and hope they go away. You will not all, always, all, all agree on every issue, but all of you must work together for the betterment of the city. Agree to disagree. Be civil to one another, and make us proud of our government. The residents of the city deserve this from all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. As he commented, I thought it's something I also needed to tell you. As you do know, many of you by now should know, that we are in the process of, the meetings are now being filmed, and Rich Peppers is right over here to my right, and he's filming the meetings. Tomorrow morning, it'll be available on our website. We are meeting Thursday with Charter. While Charter is working with Lindenwood to film these on Charter Network, apparently they ran into a problem with their, what'd you tell me, Rich? With their fiber, fiber, fiber optics, that were run to Lindenwood, and there has to be some, we're meeting with them to figure out, and they may have it done by the time we meet, but that's why they weren't on Charter yet. But we're meeting with the Charter representatives and Lindenwood University on Thursday, and we'll have more answers. But it is being filmed tonight, so keep that in mind. Please speak into the microphones, council. It's more important than ever. Rich reminded me the other day that to pick up your voices properly, you have to position the microphone in front of yourself when you speak and address the, the issues. And likewise, public, or if staff gets asked to speak, please step up to the microphone so that we can hear everybody's answers if there's questions for staff, et cetera. So those are a couple things I do want to, I did want to reiterate. But we're getting closer, but it's been an interesting process. But this is, this will be on our website, the Belleville City website, by mid-morning tomorrow, Rich? Okay? So just an update. Yes, ma'am?
Excuse me. When Charter does it, it will be live, and what channel will it be on?
I'll be honest with you, that's a question I have to double-check with the Charter officials when they get here, and I'll have those answers. There's been so much since this thing first started with Charter that has been some changes, that I want to hear it from them, and Rich and I and a few of us have a list of questions for them, and we'll get those answers for all of us, so.
One more thing. And when it is decided, do you think we could put a little notice in the paper stating what channel and that?
Oh, I'm sure the, I'm sure the News Democrat, I'm sure our reporter who's here will certainly be happy to do that, but uh,
I mean, don't wait till the next, excuse me.
Well, I will try, we'll certainly, we will certainly send that over even as a news release to remind them.
All right, thank you.
Okay? All righty. So we're, is there, yes, public participation still is going on? Yes, ma'am?
Rose Wilson, 322 West A Street. I just need to make a comment today in regards to our fine police officers. Thanks to Crime Free Housing, we've had some issues on A Street, and Matt Icecanned and his team and housing, they were superb. Getting rid of one-bedroom houses that housed seven people, trash issues that we lived with for close to two years. We do have a fine police department, and Belleville still is a good city to live in, and I do support the 25 cent tax. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ed Summers. I live on Shale Street in Belleville, and I'm sure all of our elected officials here believe that you were elected by the people to make the hard decisions. I would agree with that 100% up to a point. That point is when you vote to enact taxes or extend taxes under one premise, and you shift to another premise to spend that money, then you are not representing your constituents. I wholly support this agenda item, that we, we put this to a vote of the people, if nothing else, to find out where the people stand and what the majority is, pro or con. Because as sure as God made little green apples, come August of 2017, we will be here again to extend this tax because you have gotten so used to spending this money in the general fund. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening want to comment? Yes, ma'am?
Joy Schreiber, 27 South 10th Street. The meeting from August 5th, I went back and re-watched that, and all the people who spoke in support of the sales tax full-heartedly believed that that was gonna afford us more police officers. I've been compiling the employment records of the police department through 2010, 11, 12, and 13, and we currently have no more officers this year than we did in 2010. We have fewer than we did in 2012. Now, I believe the information I got was on a calendar year, so I don't know what hires were done after January 1st of this year. But I do have the data compiled, and, I mean, if you're counting admin, which is the chief, the lieutenant colonel, and three captains, I don't count those as officers that are on the street. And the community service officers, I don't know at what point they were hired, but each of them made about $6,000 for the year, so I don't know if that's because they're part-time, or if they were hired mid-December or what. But my records show that we have no more officers now than we did in 2010. Thank you.
Anyone else for public participation? Yes, ma'am?
This is always too low for me, or too high. I think I can make it, though. My name is Mary McHugh, 10503 West Main, here in Belleville. It's a wonderful thing that many, many, many organizations, churches, schools, elected officials, and our regular citizens, young and old, are happily giving hours of their time to make our city a better place to live, play, and work. On the other hand, we do have citizens who dwell on finding fault, the gotcha citizens. We have lots of other citizens, though, some of them in this room who are looking for faults and impeding the progress of our great city. It seems to me that these citizens are grandstanding and seem to be campaigning maybe for the next election. I salute every one of our council and city leaders that were on that trolley for our 200th birthday celebration. Again, others were campaigning. There was no place for that in our beautiful parade for the 200th. Another subject quickly. Myself and many friends are living on a fixed income, but we love the quarter cent tax. 25 cents on $100 for things that I don't really need, or I don't need to buy. And I agree with our great police chief in this city that to use that tax to house our new policemen and our, and our policewomen in our new, in our new, in their new place, there's nothing too good for them, as far as I'm concerned. And any fool knows that working in an environment that is, that is top-notch is going to reduce crime in our city, and this will give us more police, I do believe, that will carry on for us. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else? Hearing that, I'm gonna close public participation, and we're gonna move on. We get now to presentations, recognitions, and appointments. And as I started to say earlier, and was caught myself, or you caught me, each month, beginning of the month, we, like the schools and many of our businesses, we remind ourselves what is posted as the character word of the month. This month, it's self-discipline, meaning thinking about your words and actions and then making choices that are right. These character words are absolutely great for all of us to be reminded of, not just our children. And I ask that we continue to hold these monthly character words in our daily thoughts. At this time, we have a bittersweet moment to recognize somebody who's given 35 years of service to the city, but the fact that they're officially retiring is the sad part. So at this time, with Royce Carlisle, the Director of Wastewater Treatment, and John Graham, please come forward. John, 35 years is a long time. And you have been very faithful to the city, and had worn different hats at the treatment plant, but have been there the whole entire time. So I'm gonna ask Royce, first of all, Royce, you wanna make a comment or two, and then I'll read the plaque as we present it to him.
Well, John, on behalf of the Wastewater Division, I'm here to thank you for the 35 years of service, and congratulate you on retirement, and say good luck in the rest of your days.
Well, thanks a lot, Rich, I appreciate that. Should be, there, this plaque here.
Well, this plaque says, states the following, presented to John Graham in grateful appreciation for 35 years of dedicated service to the city of Belleville, Wastewater Division, 1979 to 2014. And John, we sincerely thank you. He has, he'll be on the books until July 19th, finishing up some stuff, but technically, he's winding down, and we're gonna miss him. He's been very faithful, and very, very good about seeing the plant, that was an old plant, go through a lot of changes, and before you're out the door here, you've watched a lot of changes with Royce and Randy and the rest of them. It's, it's changing before our eyes each and every day.
Well, I'd like to borrow a phrase you always use, and it's always been an honor and a privilege to work for the city of Belleville all these years.
Thanks, John. And thanks to you. Just if I may, if the rest of you can be seated. Family and the people who work at the Wastewater Treatment Plan, stand up. Family and employees. Well, it's great, and I know there was, yeah, here we go. So thank you, and John, thank you again for your service. Okay, take care. Here you go. This time, I want to bring your attention to, last week, the city of Belleville was recognized by Ameren. Ameren, Illinois, awards the city of Belleville as an Action Energy Most Progressive City. And this was a culmination of things, and it was actually in 2013, but they just finished up the tabulation of everything and all the results. And this was a, we got two signs they gave us to show over here, these bright green signs, 2013 Most Progressive City, Belleville. Act on Energy by Ameren of Illinois. And this was for a couple reasons, as they stated. One, we had a number of businesses that worked with, worked with Ameren on evaluating their business efficiency and trying to work smarter and save energy. And they also recognized the fact that the city, the city government here has had energy audits on different buildings. Our wastewater treatment plan project that Royce and John and Randy are all with the staff working on so diligently, this is, they're working right now on the first $44 million. staff working on so diligently, this is, they're working right now on the first $44 million of mandated improvements, but we also, with that project, have partnered to make it very energy efficient, and we're saving money. We've done this, like I said, by various businesses. We've done other energy things and green things in regards to the police cars we're buying with changing the size of engines for many of the different departments, just a host of things to try to be more conscious of the environment and of the energy. So it was great on behalf, is there anyone from Ameren here this evening? I don't think they were going to get to make it back, but we had several other officials came here a week ago and recognized the city, and we appreciate that, and it's nice to be recognized when they, they spot and see that we're doing things that are, as a community, and several of the businesses were here that day for their efforts of working to be more efficient. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, and you will see these signs posted in a couple locations around city buildings, et cetera, that we can take some pride in this recognition and continue to work for the future as we try to be more efficient in our energy conservation. So, moving on. At this time, each year, May, the first meeting of May, it's traditional that the mayor would appoint the department heads and some of the managers and key staff that have traditionally been by ordinance recognized as appointed positions. In your packet, you have a list that's really, I believe, had very few changes since last year. Everything on here, on this list, you have approved along the way. There was, you know, certainly there was one change in my office, but you approved earlier, but this is the tire. Now, I do note, I do note that you'll notice that I'm recommending that Fire Chief Tom Poor and Deputy Chief Bud Jacobs are made permanent. We've had many meetings in the last several months since Chief Langston's retirement. It was both a chance for the mayor to see, for me to see how they handled the job, and also a chance for them to see if they liked the job, and I think that's a fair, a question that was raised, and I know Bud certainly said, "Yeah, let me see how this feels." So this is my list here tonight. Alderman Hayden, you have a question?
No, Your Honor, I'd just like to state, unless there's an objection by a fellow council member, which I would be willing to remove a name if so be, I would like to make a motion to approve the, all the appointments as listed by a vote of acclamation of all the city councils.
Alderman Hayden's making a motion?
I'll second that motion.
Alderman Heisler's making a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Epstein.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
We have a motion and a second to pay the claims. If there's no further question, roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals Advisory Reports.
Your Honor.
Yes.
Since there are seven of these and all of them passed unanimously, could I ask if we might read them as a group and pull out anyone that somebody wants to discuss?
Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
So...
Uh, yes.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Kinsella and a second by Alderman Schmidt to read the zoning board of appeals as a group and vote on them as a group. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Case number 24, April 14th, Todd Kennedy requesting an area bulk variance in order to install an eight-foot privacy fence on the side property line at 4204 West Main Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Number two, case number 25, April 14th, Settender Singh requesting a special use permit for a liquor license and operate a convenience store and gas station at 7311 Old St. Louis Road like located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Number three, case 26, April 14th, Cheller Tool &amp; Die requesting a use variance in order to expand the existing parking lot at 8 Florida Avenue onto the property identified by parcel number 08-22.0-420-0818 which is located in A1 single-family zoning district. Number four, case 27, April 14th, Cheller Tool &amp; Die requesting an area bulk variance in order to expand existing facility relief has been requested for maximum lot coverage and from front side and rear setback requirements to 05 and 0 respectively. The property is located in a D2 heavy industry district. Number five, case number 29, April 14th, Charles &amp; Carol Mr. requesting a use variance in order to operate a church at 19 South 97th Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Number six, case number 30, April 14th, John Bailey Flamingos requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at 923 West Main Street located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district. Number seven, case number 31, April 14th, Don Reed requesting a special use permit for a liquor license at 341 Centerville Avenue located in a C2 heavy commercial zoning district.
I move that items one through seven be approved.
I second that.
And have the proper ardent drawn?
Yes, sir.
Motion is by Alderman Kinsella, second by Alderman Schmidt to approve the zoning items that were just read and that are listed in your agenda to be approved. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Dead spot there. Motion carries. We have the city attorney report dated May 1st, 2014. What's your pleasure?
Move to be received and filed.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Seibert to receive and file the attorney's report. Any discussion? All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All reports. Alderman Heisler.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, Your Honor, before we start, uh, there's a typographical error on the second motion. It should read forty-six cents instead of forty-seven cents.
Note on your agendas, please, that should be forty-six cents under the amount that we'll be paying Hair Plumbing.
If there's... Your Honor, if there's no objection, uh, I would like to make the following two motions together and vote on them together. So moved, Your Honor.
I see no objection to the motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Hayden to, uh, proceed and to, uh, approve those two motions as listed in your agenda, uh, at this time. Any further discussion?
Yes, motion number one, to approve the LTCP construction pay request number forty-six from Cordy Lujon and Tuvodaw Wade Immersion for a total amount of thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. The second motion, to approve the LTCP Phase Two construction pay request number eight from Hair Plumbing and Heating in the amount of three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-six cents. So moved, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Heisler, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on the two motions? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve purchase of one budgeted snow ice unit for the street department from state awarded bid vendor Rush Truck Center Prairie International for one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars to be paid at time of delivery through lease financing.
Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion on the purchase of this snow and ice vehicle? We could have used...
Oh, I... Yeah. Your Honor, does this... Does this include this... A... A spreader?
It's a complete package, right, Mike and Chuck?
It's gonna... Chuck, and Chuck, the... Will it have the ability to also add to that spreader calcium chloride?
Unfortunately, no.
What... What would the cost be on that?
Probably about another...
How much was budgeted for this?
Forty-seven thousand for three years, so...
Hundred... Hundred and forty-one.
That's a hundred and forty.
Hundred and forty-one.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'll just ask then to move on, Your Honor, if... If the Director of Public Works could look into... To adding, since we're buying something new, the calcium chloride, uh, thing and then bring that to the next Streets and Grades Committee?
Wasn't the problem when we checked in a while back, Chuck, getting calcium chloride in the... The quantity... I mean, the...
The... The point... The point of the question, Your Honor, is the fact that, and hopefully, uh, we don't see it for a while, but we had the most brutal winter since I was a senior in high school, which was eighty-two. And during that time, many Aldermen were getting complaints, you know, which I again think our, uh, street crew did a tremendous job with the equipment and manpower that we got, but there was some concerns and complaints, especially on the main roads. And what the public needs to understand is, once you get twenty degrees or below, the salt is not going to do anything. Where if we have the ability, and obviously, everything i-is an expense, but if we have the ability to mix in calcium chloride, that gives us an advantage that our staff does not have, and I think for the benefit of public safety, it's something that should be further explored.
We will, uh, look into it.
Because we... As... As... As been noted before, Your Honor, we... We are snow plowing the streets, not so people can go to work, not so people can go to school, not so you can go get bread and milk. It's so a policeman, a fireman, or an ambulance, or any of the above can get to your house. That's the primary purpose, and if we get it twenty degrees below and we have some of the conditions that we have, we need to protect and serve the public, and this is an aspect that strongly, strongly think we should continue to look into, and I thank you.
We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we get to communication, I wanted to make one other announcement. As we have the Boy Scouts here this evening doing their, uh, work for their badge, we also have a group of Lindenwood students here this evening. Uh, raise your hands if they're still here. Some of them are here. There's about ten of them, and they're here for a class, a, uh, a social studies class, and their instructors, Brian Sargia. Is that correct? And, uh, we appreciate you coming. I know they've been here before, some of these classes, to observe for some of their, uh, work that they're doing, but it's, uh, always nice to see, particularly Lindenwood, as you, uh, the great improvements we're seeing on that corridor, so thank you for coming tonight. Um, we now go to communications. I'll turn it to the clerk.
Hey, communication from the southwestern Illinois Central Labor Council requesting permission to hold annual Labor Day parade and picnic on Monday, September 1st, 2014, starting at ten a.m.
Is there a problem if we read this as a group?
Keep reading. Keep reading.
B, communication from Our Lady Queen of Peace School requesting permission to hold a 5K run on Saturday, May 10th, 2014, starting at nine a.m., and requesting ten to twelve wooden barricades to use to help direct participants and keep traffic away from the start and finish line area. C, communication from Kansas Avenue Neighborhood Watch Association requesting permission to close C and Kansas for their 2014 Kansas Avenue Neighborhood Watch Association Spring Block Party on May 31st, 2014, from three... Three thirty p.m. until seven p.m. with a rain date of June 1st. They are also requesting four sets of barricades and four picnic tables.
Will the request be granted?
Second, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden to approve the three communications that were just read. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no petitions this evening, resolutions. We have Resolution 3187 and Resolution 3188.
Would be res group.
I asked for a motion to read by title only, I should say first.
And a group, yes.
Motion to read by title only and approved. Second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anthony. Discussion? All in favor to me, read as by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A, Resolution 3187, a resolution authorizing the execution of the CDBG Cooperation Agreement for federal fiscal years 2015, 2016, and 2017. B, Resolution 3188, a resolution authorizing the execution of the Home Investment Partnerships Consortium Agreement for federal fiscal years 2015, 2016, and 2017.
Motion to approve Resolution 3187, 3188.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Seibert. Any discussion? Further discussion? Yes, sir.
One... One quick question, Your Honor, and this is probably for the city attorney, just the... A... And looking at this, would the city of Belleville, if it so choose, Mr. Horner, have the ability to establish its, uh, own housing authority based on our size?
Our own housing what?
It... It's just a question that came up. Would we have the ability to establish our own housing authority program instead of working through a joint agreement with the St. Clair County based on the size of our community and home rule?
That's something I'll have to... I'll have to research that, but I could get an answer for the council.
Could you research that for me? It's just a question that, uh, I'd like to have explored.
We have a motion and we have a second to approve these two resolutions as written here this evening. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carried, or motions carry. This time I'd ask for a motion to read by title only. Ardenances number 7770, 7771, 7772, 7773, 7774, 7775, and 7776.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt.
And as a group.
Second by Alderman, uh, Seibert, and as a group.
And as a group.
All in favor of that motion to read those ardenances as a group, uh, and by title only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
A, ordinance number 7770, in ordinance in regard to case 24, April 14th, uh, Todd Kennedy, area bulk variance. B, ordinance number 7771, in ordinance in regard to case 25, April 14th, Settender Singh, special use permit. C, ordinance number 7772, in ordinance in regard, case 26, April 14th, Cheller Tool &amp; Die, use variance. D, ordinance number 7773, in ordinance in regard to case 27, April 14th, Cheller Tool &amp; Die, area bulk variance. E, ordinance number 7774, in ordinance in regard to case 29, April 14th, Charles &amp; Carol Mr. Mr. Use, uh, variance. F, ordinance number 7775, in ordinance in regard to case 30, April 14th, John Bailey Flamingos, special use permit. G, ordinance number 7776, in ordinance in regard, case 31, April 14th, Don Reed, special use permit.
Moved to be approved.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Seibert to approve these ardenances as just read. Further discussion? Roll call.
Heisler.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewitz.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlett. Schneider.
Aye.
Ardenances are passed. This time we have a motion that was requested by Alderman Hayden to be put on this meeting. A motion to authorize advisory referendum concerning the home rule sales tax and to have the proper ardent drawn pursuant to Section 3.1-40-60 of the Illinois Municipal Code 65ILCS 5/3.1-40-60 and Sections 28-2 of the Illinois Election Code 10ILCS 528-2.
Yes, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve this, uh, by, uh, uh, resolution to have this done and amended that would basically state, uh, shall... The question, shall the home rule quarter cent sales tax be extended upon... Beyond the 2014, 2015 fiscal year? Yes or no? And that's my motion.
I'll second it.
And, Your Honor, I want to state that the reason I brought this forward is that this is actually the recommendation that came out of, of the, uh, Finance Committee back in, in discussions of July and August of 2013 and brought to the city council. Initially, the recommendation was that there be a referendum and that it be two years. Then at the city council meeting, uh, it was amended by, uh, Alderman Schmidt initially wanting to make the tax permanent, then it was changed to four years to coincide with a four-year COPS grant. For those of you that are not aware, we did not receive the COPS grant. Therefore, in my mind, Your Honor, the rationale to extend it four years based on a grant that we did not, uh, get no longer exists. I'm not going to get into the debate tonight, uh, in relation to... To all the statements that were made August, uh, 5th. I certainly have gone back and looked at them as well, other than to say, Your Honor, it was clearly... Clearly, if you watched that meeting, the intent of this council and placed out to the general public that what we were doing was we were extending this for the benefit to protect and serve the people, and the people were led to believe that we were going to put, uh, more police on the streets. Um, it has been discussed that we, as city council members, are the representatives, and it's our job to represent majority rules. That is correct, and many people misconstrue our form of government. We are not a democracy, we are a republic, and we are a representative form of government. But now, when we get into an issue of this, and it has become, in my mind, Your Honor, contentious out into the public, if we want to talk majority rule, then the best thing to do is to get the public's input. It will also be used as a budget planning tool for us to prioritize the measures. This is advisory, it's not, uh, binding, but it will give us, Alderman, the true pulse of the public. Lastly, we need to look into, Your Honor, it has been stated in a memo from our finance director that... Finance, uh, director that sales tax is down. One key question that we must ask, as being diligent and representative, uh, city council members, is why? And one rationale to why is, it was spoken out at the public that they don't mind paying an extra quarter on a hundred dollars. But we, Your Honor, have to look at the total aggregate effect of this tax onto our total sales tax, and then the added TIF tax in some districts, and when you put that accumulative effect of how much we're actually paying when somebody buys a hundred dollars' worth of something in the city of Belleville, and they start seeing ten dollars of tax on, uh, on their items, that that accumulative effect, and then they start saying, well, you know, I can go over here to so-and-so and buy that and only pay maybe six dollars and seventy cents in tax. These are things that need to be analyzed, and I believe placing this, uh, as a referendum, asking that the people support this tax is the best way for us to understand how the public feels about it. Thank you.
So we have a motion by Alderman Hayden, and we have a second by Alderman White. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Uh, correct. You raised your hand, she did. I'll... I'll recognize you, you spoke up. Um, we have a second. Alderman White, discussion?
Just a couple of comments, Your Honor. First of all, as has been stated here earlier tonight, the city government really is basically the only level of government that people really can touch and feel. Everything else seems to be kind of abstract. You might be lucky and live next to your congressman, or maybe even know who your senator is. And I have had a couple of comments on the quarter percent sales tax, which was kind of ironic. I was working out my yard, uh, this morning, and two people stopped and asked me about that. And their comment was, basically, they don't trust government to do always the best thing in interest for the people. What they said was they use... They use the state of Illinois as an example, which I can understand. Every time you get a tax that is purported to be a temporary tax, it always seems to become permanent. And they thought that having that on the agenda, on the ballot in November, would at least give the citizens a chance to participate in government and express their opinions.
Alderman Schmidt.
I had five phone calls about this issue this week. One person is adamantly opposed to any tax, any way, anyhow, doesn't want it on the agenda, and the other four are in favor of it, and I've talked to like three other people, person to person, and said it, so, you know, most people are in favor of it, and, um...
In favor of the tax or in favor of it putting on the agenda?
In favor of the tax, they're leaving it as it is right now.
Okay.
They don't see a reason to change it, and so, if we're gonna talk about what the people want, you know... I had one person that...
Okay, but... But let me... Okay, let's...
Let's see what they want.
I'm sorry?
I said, let's see what they want. Let's see what's on binding.
Alderman Schneider, go ahead.
Oh, I'm waiting for him, he's still up.
No, go ahead. Uh, yield it.
Oh, thank you. My comment on this is, I agree with that it should be put on the ballot. What are we afraid of that the people are going to say? Why do we... Why would the Ald... Why would us Aldermen, all of us, not want this on the ballot? This is something to let the people voice their opinions. When else have we let them voice their opinions this year? We've got to start letting the people speak. When I ran, my thi... My... One of my campaign things was I would hold town hall meetings because I wanted to know how my constituents felt and what they were thinking. Cause if you don't talk to them, you don't know. And what... My main thing again is, what are we afraid of of putting this on the ballot? Because we have made statements before that we want this money extra, the projected extra amount of sales tax put in a separate account. That has not been done. If we would do stuff like that, maybe we could show the people that we're trying to let them know what's going on. This is the extra amount of sales tax. This is what it was spent on. I think it should be on the ballot and let the people voice their opinion. This is America.
Okay.
I thought they put us on this council to make decisions.
That's a point, too. Alderman Kinsella.
Your Honor, Mr. Hayden said that this was brought in with the, um, the idea that we... We brought this in because we were going to get a COPS grant and pay part of it. The COPS grant would pay part, and we paid the rest. Because we didn't get the COPS grant, we now have to foot the whole bill. So the logic of doing away with this is not very logical because we don't have a COPS grant anymore. Before, what the intent was to add some money along with the COPS grant, perhaps matching funds, and get cops through that. And now, he's suggesting that we might, since we don't get a COPS grant, we might do away with these funds that have been paying for police? Uh, you know, I mean, we have extra... We've done a lot of things in... Well, not a lot, but we've done things in the police department, for instance, community service officers. They release some of the actual police on the street so that, from their time of running, uh, certain errands and things, and we have hired one police officer, and we hired another one in housing, but that's crime-free housing. Um, I don't think this is the time to consider cutting funding that we would need if we... If we did get a COPS grant or if we didn't. But the fact that we didn't hire all four that we were originally talking about is due to the fact we didn't get the COPS grant.
Okay, Alderman Schneider, I mean, who's next? Anybody? Like, a couple of things I want to clarify, you... You want to go ahead?
I was just gonna say that the... The COPS grant was to... We were gonna combine this money with the COPS grant and hire four cops. We didn't get the... We didn't get the money. So there was a motion made last city council meeting when we were talking about passing the budget by Mr. Hayden to add two cops, and that was voted down. So I don't think you can... I don't think you can justify this tax's existence, uh, to pay for cops when originally it was never intended to do that to begin with, and only when we had this COPS grant out there, uh, that we applied for was the... It was the justification not to have it sunset. So to me, that's disingenuous.
Couple of comments I'd like to make, if I may, and Jamie... Believe me, as mayor, I want to hire cops. I mean, heck, you know, which mayor doesn't want to hire cops? But we did this, and some situations and some circumstances have changed, and we have advised you each and every step of the way. First of all, I put on your table today some... I came... I went to meetings last week in Springfield, and I put on here a couple of things I shared with you about bills that are in front of the House and the Senate right now, cause it was mentioned earlier by, I think, Mr. White just mentioned about Springfield. And I will tell you, one of the reasons I'm right now, and Jamie and I during the finance, uh, budget process cautioned that we go slow, is because there's more legislation, or in some cases, when it comes to pension reform, lack of legislation that's going to hit the cities in their pocketbook. These... These bills right now that are here pertaining to Manning with the Fire Department's request, the Illinois Federation of Firefighters in the state, if passed, are going to affect cities. If the Firemen's Association and the unions can start to go to arbitration to tell cities how many people they have to have on the Fire Department, and we get told that we have to have hypothetically four more firemen, right now, we'd probably have to cut four policemen. They've not done their homework about what this is affecting. We need to be... I spent two days up there last week talking to legislators that this is not right. If you read this stuff of some of the pension stuff and some of the bills that are in front of us, these can have a devastating... They're gonna bankrupt cities if we... If our state continues to adopt legislation the way they are. Now, what we have said, and Jamie and I were very careful during the budget process, has said, we need another six months or so to evaluate where we're going. I stated at the last meeting, I do believe that we'll be in a position to hire another officer through the crime-free housing by the fall. Now, yes, that's paid by crime-free housing, but we also all... I don't know if I should say the word "all," but many of us agreed that many of the calls that the police department have to respond to are crimes and calls at apartment complexes where people are making money off these apartments, and they're costing our police department a lot of calls for service. So we enacted that ardent, and it's... I must say, I think it's going extremely smooth. We're getting results. The police department is working... But, uh, understand, even though those couple of officers, one, you know, we got one right now, we're gonna hire another, we believe, we'll feel very strong, there's still commissioned officers. That's more officers on a street. We are at eighty-four right now, and Chief Clay, is that not the highest number we've ever had? So we do have more officers right now than the city of Belleville has ever had. Correct? Okay. We all want more officers. But the chief came forward, and many of you spoke up a year ago about how deplorable, that's probably a good word, the conditions are in the police... This current police station. Not only are they not pleasant, to say the least, it's not real safe. The ADA issues, um, it was just a matter of time. It is just a matter of time until we will... Potentially could be cited. We have to fix and, uh, and address these. to fix and, and address these. Jamie and I have cautioned the council, that we believe we should wait a little bit longer, until we can propose to you, and we think it'll be soon. We've been working on a financial proposal of how we can afford, and, and we did identify a building, and we did approve this council, and a majority of you went with it, the vast majority of you, to approve a new site. But it's gonna take some, we're trying to get all the ducks in a row, so we see what the money's gonna be. Chief Clay made it very, very, very clear, during the budget process, that his number-one priority right now, more than hiring more manpower at this moment, is to improve the conditions and the facilities at which these men and women work in. They're currently in four different buildings, they're outdated, they're distasteful in many cases, and, and the conditions, the working conditions, some of them look like they're working in closets for offices. We need more improved space, meeting rooms, training rooms, an environment where the chief can have and manage his people in one building. And, and we did this last council meeting, I believe it was almost unanimous again, that we voted to buy the adjacent property, so we could foresee in this project, or shortly thereafter, a new garage, so we can keep police cars out of the weather when they're not running, and we can do those things as well. All we're saying is, we need a little time. Now, I don't disagree that it's always great to have public input, but let's also be honest. First of all, this last election was extremely disappointed at the, the percentage of voter turnout of registered voters. It was around twenty, twenty-two percent. Some precincts had nine, ten percent. And right now, with the attitude across the country of many people, they wouldn't vote for any tax for anything, they wouldn't even listen to the details, it would just be no. We, we're not gonna have a choice, ladies and gentlemen, and when it comes soon, to making these improvements to be accessible for disabilities. Our police station is antiquated. You have to walk up steps that are extremely not easy for people who have handicaps. You have to walk all the way up the block and around the front to have the handicap ramp, and there's no parking to pull over to get out of the car on Illinois Street, or you'll get run over. All I'm saying is, that we need time to gather some more information, before we would rush out and put something on the ballot, that would try to get the public's, in many cases, knee-jerk reaction. And, and we do need to think this through. I don't think tonight is the night, that we should be rushing a decision to put something on the ballot...
Point, point, point of order.
You know, just a point. Yes, sir.
Point of order, you know, you know, Mayor, I understand what you're saying, but, you know, the point of order here, and this refers back to the city attorney. Your Honor, if you're gonna sit up there and be an advocate for a position, you need to, sir, remove yourself from the chair. You cannot sit up there, Your Honor, in all due respect, and be an advocate on an issue. If you want to play the role, which you're allowed to, as a legislator, then you need to remove yourself from the chair. The chair is supposed to be an unbiased, we got children out here tonight witnessing government, and they need to understand, the chair is supposed to run the meeting and be unbiased. And I would ask the city attorney, if he's gonna be an advocate, shouldn't he not remove himself from the chair?
And, and Mr. Hayden, I, I respect your opinion, and, and there's probably some, maybe I went a little lengthier than I should, but I also told you before, and I think we have a unique situation. I am not just the chair of this meeting, I'm also, the city of Belleville has the strong mayor form of government. We do not have a city manager. The mayor is the day-to-day CEO of the city, and I'm explaining to you what questions have been sent to me, about finance, and about my finance director, and myself, and other staff members, concerns, that we are rushing in for an reaction...
I respect that.
And, and I'm just trying to clarify.
Again, point of order. If you're gonna be an advocate, you should remove your...
Okay, let's move on. Are there any other comments? Alderman Holt?
Yes, I have my hand.
I'm sorry, you still got something else to say?
Yes, sir. I went, I, I stated at the beginning, Your Honor, I, I, it wasn't a question of wanting to rehash the budget debate. We had it last week, but if you're gonna bring it back, we'll bring it back. You know, the public needs to know, that since 2010, we created a wheel tax, because we were short on money from the state. Basically, an aggregate of six hundred thousand. Between the two years of the wheel tax, which we then, I'm here partly because of that, and I ran on crime, we collected seven hundred thousand dollars, that could have been put i- i- in an escrow account or whatever, to cover that shortfall. We then turned around, Your Honor, and, and created a sales tax to replace the wheel tax, with the public believing, in many cases, Your Honor, that we, we got a six hundred thousand shortfall every year. That is not true. But there's public misconception out there of what is going on. It's not every year. And in those three years, we have taken in, in your words, one point two million dollars. Now, if I have pointed out before, over the last five years, we've taken in four point seven million dollars. Now, the point of the matter is, the public has made it clear. They made it clear during the mayor's race, Your Honor, and you know that. This lady here from the BND, went, she started out wanting to do a hundred doors, it, but the time consuming, and we all know how hard it is to knock on doors, but she went to a hundred doors and ended up with fifty, in all eight wards, and the number-one issue was crime. Now, I supported the new police station at that location, but I have made it very clear to You, Your Honor, how we pay for it is still open to debate. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and debate with you, or the police chief, on, on, on issues, other than, I do know that it has been stated before, by our chief, and by you, and, and everybody, that if we're gonna deter crime, we need, at a minimum, to add ten police officers to make an effective patrol on the street, to where the word gets out, you don't want to come to Belleville, because they got the police officers out there, and they're gonna arrest you if you get a crime. And that, Your Honor, gets back to, if you want to talk about economic development and viability in the city, we as a city council, and this gentleman over, if he's still here, spoke earlier, we cannot sit here, a- a- and with blinders on, and continue to allow people to move out. There's vacant houses all over around my house and the ward, and the same time, the people are concerned. And that perception is also affecting the city. And as I pointed out earlier, you, you, you're talking about the attitude of the public, and you mentioned last meeting, that they wouldn't support two nickels. Well, again, maybe that's because of the frustration, Your Honor, at the local level, that they don't see their representative, representing them on their needs. And, and again, it's not just a quarter on a hundred dollars, it's the aggregate effect of our total sales tax. When people start seeing that they're spending ten to eleven dollars in sales tax, to where it can only be on a hundred dollars versus six dollars and seventy-five cents, that is something, Your Honor, that needs to be looked at, and this referendum will allow that. And lastly, Your Honor, I understand we're gonna get hit, we, we could get hit with the multitude of, of different expenses, but we have made, and, and, you know, the, the crime-free housing, that's a rent tax. That's a rent tax, and it's basically landlords or the renters that it's passed on is paying for that. And, that, i- i- in some ways, that's an inadequate way to, to, uh, uh, put police on the streets, because now we're pitting landlords and renters versus homeowners, and, and I don't think, in the long run, Your Honor, that's a very wise thing to do. But the public needs to know, we have brought our reserves up since 2010, from one point two million to three point five million, and there is no doubt in my mind, if we prioritized, that we could have added more cops. And one last thing, Your Honor, I'm sorry, and with all due respect, but please, don't tell me, because I can't believe you're serious, that if we have to cut staff, any staff, for any reason, that the first place we're gonna cut is police, because I can tell you, this alderman will not support that.
Alderman Schmidt.
I just, I'm sometimes confused.
Go ahead.
What Belleville, Mr. Hayden lives in, I've had, I live in Ward Two, and the area I personally live in has been a crime area. And I've had so many people coming up to me in the past six months, telling me how much better they feel about it. Lieutenant Iskand has done this magnificent job, and I think our current police department is managing the assets better. We have wonderful assets in our police department that are doing a good job. And there are people, we still have crime, but people have said they feel safer. And I mean, for the area around, like St. Paul's and Maxwell's and all that, people to say that, I find that amazing, but I feel safer. Okay? And I think we're doing a good job, and I, but I think we do, and we're not passing the buck, to let people vote on it. That's the job they elected us to do, to make these decisions. We have two, city elections every two years anyway. We don't need to have another unnecessary election, that will cost money, and people have to get issues out, when we have other state and regional ballots coming up this fall. So, I think, you know, we should do our job.
Alderman Holt, you're next.
The ability to levy taxes is a very serious burden, and I, I give my colleagues credit for thinking things out. And I appreciate the remarks made by both my colleagues and the public about, we need to do our job, we need to make the decisions. I think the frustration comes from the public, that we keep making promises that we have not kept. Over and over, we have told them, if we raise your taxes, if we do this, if we do that, then we will hire more policemen. But there's always an excuse, always another reason, whether it's good or not, that's people's opinion. But it hasn't happened. We have not increased the size of our police department. If we were a business, we'd be accused of bait and switch. And I believe that is what the alderman is trying to prove by this referendum. We are basically saying to the public, is it okay if we do something different with this money than what we told you we were gonna do with it? Because we told you, we were gonna hire four cops. Now, we're not gonna hire any. Is it okay if we use it to fix the police station, or whatever else new project comes up? But the fact of the matter is, we raise taxes, and we need to keep our word.
Okay, who else? Jamie, do you care, this, do you have anything you want to clarify? It's up to you. I just think that, you know, we just went through months of the budget process, and really, and truthfully, during the budget process, I'm sorry, Alderman, Randall?
Thank you, Mayor. I've been listening very intently to the debate, you know, between all the parties involved here. And it's obvious that we've got some very difficult decisions that we need to make as a city council. I also believe that, that it's important that we allow the public to have input, in terms of some of the things that we do as a council, whether it be raising taxes, or putting money to use in one fashion or another. The tax revenue has been said to be flat or down, and the question that's on my mind is, what's going on in the face of an actual growing economy at this point in time, that we should be experiencing a flat or decreasing tax revenue? It makes me wonder if the people are really voting with their feet, by shopping elsewhere, or maybe being more prudent with their money, and not spending as much as what they had before. The one thing that I do agree with Alderman Schmidt about, is that whether or not this goes on the ballot, ultimately, we all know that the real referendum will be the election that folks will be running for office on. That's, I think, where the real referendum comes down to, whether or not people are willing to support the continued behavior of the council, as it continues to conduct its business, or if it decides that it needs a change of direction. That's, to me, the ultimate referendum that will be on the ballot.
And I don't disagree with you. Jamie, I, I just, I asked Jamie to stand up here, because we went through a lengthy budget process, and really, these conversations didn't happen at any of the finance meetings, virtually none, until after the, but, the night the budget was passed. Jamie, would you want to just freshen up some of your concerns that you shared?
Yeah, I, I think all of you have read the memo. It speaks for itself. Our fiscal year ended last week. It ended pretty much right on with what we had projected. Many revenues were down, not just sales tax, there were several other taxes. I'm not opposed to hiring police officers. I trust Chief Clay, when he tells me what his priority is, when we meet and go over the budget for four or five months. The majority of the council has said we need a new police station. We're working on getting a financial package together of what that might look like. And the top priority is to not add any extra taxes to pay for that. I can't do that if we keep adding more and more and more expenses, before we know what those final figures are gonna be. The budget's been out since February. Not one person came to me with, why aren't there more cops? I have this list of ideas for ways we can cut this budget to add cops. Nobody has proposed any cuts that would pay for them. It was only, let's add cops, let's add cops. The budget is balanced to five thousand dollars. So, you can't just add a cop, you have to cut something in return. And any new expenditures has been approved by this council. So, all I ask is, if you want to add cops, please make recommendations for cuts, that the whole council can discuss and vote on as well.
Yes, ma'am.
For years, we have been asking for a different budget process, so that priorities were set by council, before the numbers were looked at.
Mrs. Holt, in all due respect, Jamie has had many budget meetings, January, February, March, even April. And, and many people did not come, or didn't share anything with Jamie, never came to my office, never had an, you know, there was a few questions. Alderman Randall had some questions that she shared with me, and, and a point, basically points of clarification, because he's relatively new. But there was no, no ideals brought forward of cutting or anything else. Now, we're not, as I said, going to have aldermen sit down with each department head, and, and go through their budget line by line. We have professional staff, and a professional finance director, with a CPA and an MBA, who's very qualified and has done a great job. But you have been invited to numerous committee meetings, and no one went through this with any questions of, we had to stay there as long as we had to.
Didn't you reference a meeting last August?
Okay, I'm just saying, we just went through the budget process, and I'm telling you the truth. Jamie, am I correct? Alderman Hayden?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. Again, I appreciate the finance director's questions. We did get the budget items in February. And for those, and ladies and gentlemen out there, i- i- in, in the public listening, and those that are watching this now on, on the, the live stream, and hopefully down the road, cable TV, I got the items in February, Your Honor. I went through the items. I looked at the items. I gave them to other people to look at the items. And then, I sent you back in March twentieth, my number-one concern and request. Now, I'm not gonna get into the debate, but, but, but Ms. Holt is bringing up the fact that, you know, a- and, and I've campaigned on it, and I'm gonna continue to campaign on it, that I think it is very prudent, that we have budget workshops, and sit down and seriously talk about it. It's not a question of going down through line by line. But once again, you, 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 we, we hear, and I respect, that our department heads are indeed, Your Honor, are experts, and we should listen to them. You are the mayor. But is there anybody out there in that audience, that believes that when the president and his secretaries give a budget to the Congress, that the Congress just says, okay, we got the, the presidents, and, and the secretaries, you know, cabinet members' budget, they're the experts, boom, we're gonna pass that? No, sir, Your Honor. There you go through deliberation and deliberation. I'm not asking for the same deliberation, Your Honor, as Congress, but there is no reason that we cannot sit down and go through these items, and start having dialogue of what the needs and concerns are. And on April or March twentieth, I asked and started that dialogue of what the need is. And you and your staff did not respond to me, until I got the council or finance packet last month. That's a fact.
And then, White?
That's a fact.
Just one thing, Your Honor. I, I agree that we can't, at this point, change our budget. I, I'll give you that. But let's get back on, on the, on the motion at hand. Motion at hand is merely, is merely an advisory referendum, trying to seek what the people will think. And I think that's still important in this country. I think we ought to do that. I know you say that we get, we get paid all this high money to be up here and, and make these decisions, and I agree with that to, to some point. But there are certain things, like adding a sales tax, starting it for two years, and then, when it comes out of committee, we wanted to make it permanent right away, and then we settled for four years. I think there's just certain things that the citizens have a right to comment on. Thank you.
Okay. Alderman Schneider?
What are we afraid of, of putting this on the, are we afraid of what the public is gonna say? That is the big question. I mean, with the wheel tax and all this, there was so much to talk about. And this was only supposed to be two years. Well, now it's longer. And it will never be. Let the people make the decision. Yes, we're elected here to make hard decisions, and we have had to make some. And if you want to start talking about the police department with their new building and all that, we make, I did, but most of the council made the agreement... But most of the council made the agreement before the study was ever in. So you just knew right then and there which is we're gonna do and where it was gonna be.
Alderman-
Because the study, no, I had the floor. The study was not even in. And then we buy the extra, no, the study was not in when we approved of buying the Bank of Belleville building.
We had a gentleman come here and give us a verbal update.
A verbal. It's gonna be just like the next topic we're gonna be talking about, where we have verbal agreements in that. And then we buy the extra ground to build the garage. When money is tight, you don't go the whole hall. We could have kept using the bays and the stuff at the Parks Building. That was the old Jack Schmidt Chevy Building. Why did we not use that instead of spending money to buy another building? We don't need to do it all at once. If that ground, if that would have sold, it would have sold. But it hadn't for how many years? We did not need to buy that extra spot. We don't need a five-star hotel for the criminals.
Alderman, Consella first.
Your Honor, before I came on this council, for years, I had questions that rose in my mind about what does somebody who represents the people do? And I was thinking on the national level. Let's say I'm a representative, for instance. And on the surface, a bill looks like my constituents would really like it. But through the knowledge that I have, I realize it's not the best thing for them. How does somebody respond? Do you vote what you think would look good to the, to the public? Or do you vote with the knowledge base that you have? And I've been on both sides of that issue in my mind over the years. It's not that our citizens aren't responsible or anything like that. It's that it's very hard to explain, through the newspaper or other ways, the actual facts that are facing us. And the people in my ward, they don't want to sit and look over the budget. They want me to do that. That's actually what I was appointed for. And to be honest, I am going to say that if this thing goes on, on the ballot, the majority of people aren't going to bother to call and say, Ken, would you explain what's this and what's that? The majority of people are tired of paying taxes, and they're gonna vote it down. So yes, I will come out and say that I'm afraid that if it went on the ballot, it would be voted down, okay? And I've already mentioned that if it is voted down, how are we gonna hire more police? I've already brought that up. But my point is that sometimes the elected official has insights that he can't explain to all his constituents, okay? So in this particular case, I'm gonna go with what I think is right. I'm not gonna rely on a vote, because I think the vote will be, who wouldn't vote to do away with taxes? And they have to also understand that a quarter cent sales tax is, impacts us much less than other taxes.
Alderman Schmidt?
I agree with Alderman Consella. I mean, I roughly, I guess-
Use the microphone, okay ma'am?
Sorry, thank you. Roughly 8,000 people in the ward, give or take. Eight people made the effort to call or contact me, not counting, you know, a few people outside of my ward and my husband. I mean, that's the only ones that cared. This has been in the paper. And I think they have ample opportunity to let us know how they feel, and some do. I had a lot of people, I had more people calling about the potholes and wanting to know if the city is going to fix their street, and we need money to do that, than called about this. And so I don't think we're afraid of it, but I think, yeah, he's right. We are afraid they're gonna make the wrong decision, say no taxes, and then we don't have money to operate the city. People like Belleville. Belleville's on the upswing. I don't, I mean, it's a, we've had this beautiful parade, and you talk to people downtown, and people are excited, and midtown is starting to develop. And we can't, you know, to quote ex-mayor Bloomberg of New York City, if you want stuff, you have to have money to pay for it. And people don't mind paying a few cents, 25 cents on $100, because it gives us stuff and gives us money to work with.
Let me do, clarify one thing, if I may. Just so everybody knows, it was clarified at the time of the tax. That quarter percent sales tax did not go on automobiles, it did not go on prescription drugs, and it did not go on groceries.
Right.
So just so everybody knows that, understands that. And all I'm saying from the administration point of view is I think it's too soon. We need some more facts to come in. Facts on how much is this police station that we voted on, and we, I think the vast majority of us agreed on, needs to be fixed. What are the total costs and how are we gonna finance it? I think we need that figure and those facts before we can turn around and make a lot more decisions. But I'm just, it's just a statement. Alderman Schneider?
How many years do we need? We're on, it's gonna be on our fourth year, because that was one of the topics that I ran on, was the wheel tax. And we got it gone. Well, then we came up with this quarter percent sales tax. Sunset clause, two years. This was just to get us through the rough patch. But now it seems like it's on and on and on. If we wouldn't be spending money that isn't necessary, yeah, I have people that want their roads fixed.
I agree.
We're not gonna oil and chip one road this year. We have not done it in how many years? But yet we've got money to buy this brand-new police station. When we could have maybe scaled back a little bit, we could have scaled back on where the garage is gonna be. We're just going the whole fancy, fancy way. And people don't want that, because there are people struggling right now. Are they going to be able to pay their electric bill, their water bill, their sewer bill? And they don't have it all that fancy. The criminals are gonna have it better than we got it. And you talk about crime-free housing. The officer we hired, that officer isn't out on the street in a patrol car. He doesn't work weekends. He doesn't work 24 hours. There's, his shift is, what, eight to four, eight to five? We need officers on the street, because, believe me, my area has had enough crime this past few weeks.
Okay, Alderman Randall?
Mayor, with all due respect, I don't think there's going to be a lot of movement in terms of changing minds here this evening. If we could, I'd like to move that we go ahead and vote on the motion as presented by Alderman Schmidt.
Okay. We have a motion to, and Mr. Hunter, does this have to come back to the resolution for Mrs. Emotion, or?
My motion was by resolution.
We're gonna have to bring back an ordinance if this is approved, because it's gotta delineate, it's gotta certify the question to the election authority.
That's fine.
So, we have a motion, as, just to put that, this would be on the November referendum, right? Mr. Hayden?
Correct. I've stated the wording of the question.
Okay. A yes vote-
If anybody needs me to restate it, I'll be more than glad to do that.
A yes vote will agree to put this on in November, but as, it's as, not as a, not as a binding, you're saying it's an advisory referendum?
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion, and we have a second. Roll call. Heisler.
No.
Consella.
No.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
No.
Ridgewood.
No.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
No.
Davidson.
No.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
No.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
No.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider. Eight to seven? Eight to seven, the motion fails. Okay, we move on to miscellaneous and new business.
You didn't ask for any other unfinished business?
Is there any other, is there any other unfinished business?
I have had a question about the Tiff 10 report. I thought you were gonna bring it to us today.
I was working with the administration this latest, late last week, trying to get information from a conversation that we have with the developer pertaining to the timing of the payments and interest. So I haven't gotten that information yet. And I did advise Alderman Hayden by email of that, because he had originally raised the question. So as soon as I get it, I, you know, I think that- Well, hopefully any day, based on the messages that were left last week.
Okay, another issue. I was at the police and fire meeting this month, and the police department had no business. And then I was very surprised to read in the newspaper that we have a new substation. And I kind of wanted to hear some details about that.
Well, I think if Chief Clay wants to come forward, it's not quite what it was made out to be. Chief, you want to explain the partnership with St. Clair County? We're not manning this. We're not paying anything for this. It's a partnership with the county, right? They're talking about the Stonehenge. The Stonehedge partnership with the, with the Stonehedge offering a spot for the officers to stop?
We're not paying, let me get away. We're not paying anything. It's strictly, they volunteered to do that. It is like any kind of substation that you would have, be it a convenience store or anyplace else. They just offer up, Target has a location with a room, and they have a computer and phone that they offer up as well. You know, so they do that at several different locations. And then what happens is the county and/or the police, if they want to go there for personal services, or they want to eat or something like that, and they go to these places, but that's-
We're not, we're not manning this.
There's nothing.
We're not spending any dollars. There was no decisions to make.
As a matter of fact, that was one of my caveats. I said, make sure you understand, this is not something that we are gonna man, or there's no hours or anything like that. If the officers are on patrol and they wish to go in there for personal reasons, or use the restroom, or whatever, or those kind of things, they can do that. But that's the extent of how we use those things.
Thank you.
Okay, yes, Alderman Hayden?
Let her finish.
Okay.
I also wanted to get a follow-up about the sculpture in the park that was damaged. I thought it was gonna be put back. What's the story on that?
What's the update, guys? Any heard word?
Okay, the sculpture by St. Tenega Park, it went back to the artist. He, he, I shipped it back. I asked, I said, do you want me to send the whole thing back, or just the parts that are damaged? He said, just send back the parts that are damaged. He, I called three or four times. He, I was in contact with him. And he, what he stated was, he's going to have to make a few minor adjustments to it so it doesn't happen again. I said, well, I agree. I definitely do not want it to happen again. Never heard back from him. We just received it on Friday. We opened it up. The maintenance guys installed it, and that's, that was his minor changes, as it is right now. So in contact with the Art on the Square Committee and with the sculpture to figure out what is actually taking place here. So that's about all I know right now, is what I stated, so, okay?
Have we been billed for anything?
No, he did not bill us for anything. That was, he was going to cover everything, because it's, you know, it was part of his-
I mean, obviously, I'm sure you've seen, Jamie, the top is extremely, I don't know, extremely, but definitely different.
To me, that's not a minor change, but it's a major change. But like I said, stated, that's the only thing I know.
Right, you're getting into semantics. You're working on that.
Yeah, that's, I, we talked about, should we take it back down, or should we leave it up? We didn't really know what to do, so we put it up. We thought, well, we're gonna leave it up, and we're gonna try to determine what's-
Did he say he'd be here during Art on the Square?
He is, yes.
Okay, so we can get him out there and have that discussion with him.
Yeah, and, yeah. I was shocked, honestly, when we looked at it and went, that's it, so, yeah. Didn't really know what to do, other than looked at it, went, I don't, I don't know what to do.
It was pretty obvious.
Obvious to me, yes. I'm not an artist, so maybe to an artist, that's a minor change. I don't really know, so, okay?
Alderman Schmidt?
I just have a question. A few weeks ago, a car went into the fountain, and I was wondering what the level of damages were.
We were lucky. Kenny, you still here? It was minimal damage. They knocked off a couple jets. We got the part ordered. The fountain was actually, the maintenance staff did a great job. They had it back up and running by Sunday evening. It was really, they hit the concrete, and they went airborne and went right down. Tom Poore was there. We were fortunate there wasn't a lot more damage. Just happened to miss, you know, all the other flagpoles and lights and everything. But it was minimal damage, and we're working to get restitution from the insurance. Hopefully, I think, hopefully they had some insurance. They were investigating all that. And, but it is back up and running, and they got the parts, so the fountain should be in full condition by this next week. Yes, ma'am?
Yes. I met with the attorney, Eric, last Thursday, because I was still upset with the way the sales tax abatement was brought on and the speech he went on for about 20, 25 minutes. It was said, when we give sales tax abatement, there is no way that we can recoup what they got. And it was said that the city fulfilled their obligation. But there's the businesses' obligation, whether it's sales tax abatement, $800,000 for attorney's fees, probate on their real estate taxes in advance, or whatever, no matter what their contract says. Then the businesses have obligations. And I have been asking to see proof of these, and no one has proof. Even at the meeting on Thursday, there was no proof that they have checked on these things. The businesses, some of their obligations is, and now this is public money, so we have a right to see it. Their amount of sales, their amount of employees, are they going to stay in business for so many years? And I didn't bring all the contracts, but we need to start seeing this. And if a business goes out of business before the time is, one of the large ones is Business A, that they're, if it's sold and the person that buys it, they have the right to take over the contract. Well, if they don't take over the contract, then they're in violation of their contract. Another thing is, we should be checking up on these contracts periodically. I mean, because these businesses sign these agreements, and that's what it's supposed to be. So I have asked, I want to see where these contracts have been checked up on. And then if you have a business that does go out, and another one takes it over, who has the right to say, okay, we're going to just accept it by word of mouth, that you're gonna assume the contract? That should be brought before council, that not one business can go out and another business buy it and take it, change the name with a sign, and their 25 years are not up yet, so they are still obligated to the contract. Who is going to fulfill the contract? The attorney said he had.
Just briefly, from that meeting, we came up with what we consider to be a solution to satisfy concerns, was developing a uniform certification document for submission through a process that the administration will determine to have them on a periodic basis, recipients of incentives, just certify that the, that the conditions of the contract are being met, whether it be, say, a certain amount of threshold sales, or number of employees, or both. You know, some way that, similar to what the state has done, to require a certification with the signature, and then there would be a, there would be whatever additional information you wanted to be on the form, but it would be a certification under oath that certain threshold amounts were being satisfied. And so that's being developed by the administration.
And then, do we have to go into executive session to talk about the one I suggested that they owe us so much money in?
If you're gonna talk about a specific perceived debt, I would recommend that, if it's gonna be imminent or probable litigation, that it be discussed in executive session.
So there's two, three of them? So when we go into executive session, we can talk about it, and the council can vote if we're going to take action because of the fulfillment of their obligations?
Can't vote tonight.
No, but we can then come out and, if we're gonna take legal action or not.
We can discuss it.
Yes, that's what I said.
Thanks, Your Honor. Once again, Your Honor, first, certainly want to thank the scouts and truce for presenting the flag and the colors and doing the Pledge of Alleges. I think they need to talk to their scout masters and maybe see if they can garner another badge, because I certainly respect them for hanging in there with us. I'm hoping that this is a learning process for them. Back to Tiff 10. The city attorney did send me a update. I appreciate the updates. Mr. Hunter, you're trying to track down evidence and information that I and other people out in the audience have spent three years on. So the fact that you haven't got it in the first month or two is- that I and other people out in the audience have spent three years on, so the fact that you haven't got it in the first, uh, month or two is, is not necessarily surprising to me. So I appreciate your diligence on, on that, uh, matter. I do wanna go back to a situation, your honor, that was brought up during public portion. We're on two years of you and your administrations in action to correct an ADA, which is federal law violation on East Washington Street. Two years.
Mr. Tur- Mr. Harner has, we listened to the attorney, the engineering took a long time, and it's been pushed around. He is in touch. Um, he's corresponded with, or I don't know if he's corresponded with, but verbally communicated with, and, and they know that we need to correct this.
IDOT is holding money from us, is that not correct?
Jamie, I, I don't, I don't-
I believe that needs to be looked into, mayor, if you're not aware of, 'cause I believe-
I don't believe that's the, uh, the, I don't believe it's-
Tim is there, he would know.
Tim, is, is IDOT holding money from us because the, uh, East Washington sidewalk is not, uh, ADA compliant?
Yes.
There we go.
How much, Tim?
It's about fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay.
So there's public money that's not been garnered back over this situation for, for two years. The last question I got, your honors, for tonight. What is the deal? I got residents calling me, um, on the electric aggregation. My understanding was that once you agreed to it, you know, that you would, you would always, every year, get a, a thing to opt out. But if you opt out initially, you wouldn't get nothing, but now I'm getting phone calls from constituents saying that they're getting the same stuff, and that they're being put back in, and they gotta opt out every year, and I didn't think that's the way it worked.
No. Jamie?
It's not opt-out every year, it's opt-out every end of contract, so the, the last contract, that first emission one is about to end. We're entering into new contracts, so they have the option to opt out then.
Okay. Do we, I, I can, I don't recall, but did we, did we place something like that in our newsletter or candy?
Yes.
Yes, and it's on the website.
It's on the website?
It's on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, yeah, we've had a couple lengthy articles explaining it in the last two months.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Schneider?
Yes, I have a question on that. So if they don't want the Amarin, they have to opt out. If we're automatically in there, we don't stay in with the cheaper electric, 'cause I told my constituents when I was getting calls, I threw the opt-out stuff away because I was already receiving the cheaper electric.
Yeah, the, the rate they were at right now is it's going to end this summer. That was the term-
So we would've had to opt out of Amarin? 'Cause we didn't fill anything out the last time to opt out.
You're opting out of the alternative supplier, other than Amarin, so if you wanna purchase bigger, the cheaper rate that they're offering, you don't have to do anything.
Well, that's what I was-
If you don't, and you wanna stay with Amarin, you send them that opt-out letter.
Okay, 'cause that's what I told them. As long as they were getting the cheaper electric right now, they didn't have to do anything. They would keep getting it.
That's correct.
Unless they wanna go back to Amarin.
Right.
So even though the rate is gonna go up from what you're getting now, that contract was, I believe, about eighteen months. Electric rates went up, and before we bid on that again, the rate's still much cheaper than Amarin, but higher when it goes back to Amarin. You have to compare it to the other rates.
So as long as they're getting the cheaper rates, they don't have to do anything.
Yes, ma'am?
How long has it been since we did large item pickup, and do we have any plans to do it?
Well, you can purchase it on, uh, throughout the month. We haven't done one, um, the last couple of years, trying to watch the budget. It has a price tag, what, Jamie and Chuck, probably what, forty thousand? Is it that much? It's about forty thousand dollars for landfill tipping and extra overtime. Um, I really wanted to do one this year, but when we were, um, as far apart on settling the general fund as we were, uh, and, and what we had to all do, and what we all had to cut to get it to where it was, uh, I didn't present it, and nobody brought it up at the time. I would love to have done it, uh, this year being the two-hundredth, but maybe next year we can try to squeeze it back in, but it has a price tag.
Okay, well, unless the first time I had heard the number, so, thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to miscellaneous and new business. I'd ask for a motion to pay the motor fuel claims in the amount of eight thousand, seven forty-four oh two. Motion by Alderman Seibert, second by Alderman Hayden. Is there any discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd ask for a motion to, uh, approve the library board's recommendation of, uh, disposal of surplus furniture and equipment by the Belvo Public Library.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Hayden. Any discussion?
How could they do this? The yard sale, eBay?
Leander? Director of the library will explain.
The material that was deemed unnecessary for the library going forward was first offered to other C departments, some of which have claimed some material. I then contacted the Belvo Historical Society to see if they wanted some of it. They have taken quite a bit. I will contact the Labor and Industry Museum this week to see if they want anything. After that, it will go up for a public auction.
But now, let me just note, uh, department heads, if you are asking for some, I'd like to know what you're requesting, so I'm kind of aware of what's going on. And two, if you request it, this is not for personal use. As Garrett reminded me, that could be criminal. It must be for, um, your department's use. And, and, uh, so we must make sure we follow those rules, okay?
How, how will the auction work?
I have contracted with an auction company. They will list items online via their website. Bids will be electronically. They will handle the payment pickup, and they will cut us a check at the end of the process.
Thank you.
So once we have this vote tonight, given the authority to move forward, I just wanna, I'll talk with Leander. Garrett and I will look at the list with him to make sure that we don't feel like there's any violations of anything, and we will move forward from there. So we have a motion, and we have a second to approve of disposal of this surplus furniture, um, due to the library improvements that are being done. I'd ask for a roll call vote. Heisler.
Aye.
Consella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Gotta get that fixed. This time, I'd ask for a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel, litigation, and property acquisition.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Schmidt, second by Consella. Any discussion? All in favor of going into executive session for those stated reasons signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will take about a- Ready? Okay. We are now back in open session, and, uh, we have one motion left on the agenda. I'd ask for a motion to approve a workman's compensation settlement for the amount of twenty thousand, three hundred nineteen dollars and no cents.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Schmidt, second by Alderman Seibert. Do I hear any discussion? Roll call. Heisler.
Aye.
Consella.
Aye.
Holt.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Ridgewood.
Randall.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Hayden.
Aye.
Seibert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galletti.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Orlet.
Aye.
Schneider.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Alderman Hayden, second by Alderman Schmidt. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.